It's smaller, it's easier to manage, of course.
Way easier.
Just by, by the nature of it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know, you know what they say, size, size does matter.
Yeah, it does. If you, if you have a criminal enterprise with like twenty guys, there's a much greater chance that you guys are going to jail than if it's just two people.
Hmm, yeah.
Uh, right, yeah.
It'd be a bigger mess, definitely, yeah.
Yeah.
Are you trying to tell us something? Are you trying to tell us something?
I'm trying to tell you that. Like, like he said, size matters. That's what I'm trying to tell you. I'm not gonna tell you anything else.
What are you gonna use coding for again?
So, so Vicky or the internet tells me that there is-
Video games and have fun.
That's awesome. That's awesome, Kima. That's a good idea.
The, the uh, the internet tells us that is two hundred and six million, hundred thirty-nine, five hundred and eighty-nine people. Uh, at the end of twenty twenty, at least.
Crazy.
The, the, the internet is, is, well, it's the internet.
It's slow.
Yeah, it's slow.
It's because it's slow, so.
But the, the, I mean, you, you grew by almost seventy-five, yeah, seventy-five million for, over the last twenty years. Like in two thousand, it was only hundred twenty-five million.
Yeah, that's, that's also, that's, it's, it's kind of like the Chinese situation where you can't always take the numbers that the government puts out very seriously.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
For sure.
Uh, they're just, they're just lots of people here. And, and lots of different tribes that aren't very friendly with each other, so.
Right.
And you, you, you do have also a lot of, uh, at least working immigrant, working immigrants, right? I think Nigeria is quite, um, quite an economic power, so I'm, I'm assuming you, you get a lot of immigration as well.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there are lots of like, I, 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 I grew up probably with more, I grew up with people from probably more countries in the world than I, than I can count. So, yeah, you have a lot of, uh, people from different countries coming to work. But it's not like, you can actually go, you can actually go, depending on where you live, you can go your whole life and never see a white person. But then if you live in some other places, you could just see a white guy every other day.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Brazilian dude or some, so it all depends on where you live.
Okay. Cause I, I think in, with that regards, it's Brazil that impressed me most because they are so mixed. So literally a guy could look, uh, could look Swedish, could look German, could look, uh, African, could look whatever, and could be Brazilian. So they can't make a difference by just looking at your face, uh. So, yeah, that's, that's actually really interesting and very impressive, um.
It is, like, the thing is-
It's actually cool, I think.
It's actually, the thing is, it's, it's simpler here, and I assume it's the same way with most African countries. People don't really care about what you look like. They just want to know where your, where's your father from. So you can literally be a white guy, and if your, if your dad is from somewhere in Nigeria, you're Nigerian. Nobody really cares whether.
Just your dad, not your mom.
Not, unless, unless your mom has probably been living here maybe since you were a kid.
Okay.
You know, but there's this, there's a sense that, well, i- if your dad, where's your dad? Oh, he's from so-and-so village or from so-and-so place, then nobody gives a damn, you're Nigerian.
Ah, that's awesome. That's cool.
Yeah, so, yeah.
That's really good.
We just got-
By the way, I was one of those ten million.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you guys are more than us.
Yeah, so I was just, I was just, so, so first of all, we, we, uh, we got a, we got a visitor from, from, uh, Novus One R One, which is, uh, Verena, she's a member of Agile Ventures, she does, uh, uh, she does Flutter development, uh, uh, and, and develop games, and she's also a streamer, so thank you for, for dropping by Twitch. Uh, I am checking out Portugal population and Austria, and I see that there's hardly any people in Austria. I mean, we're talking nine million people. It's like Sweden.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the last time, I, last time I checked, Austria was like eight million or something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, that's about the size. Uh, but I think our country is much smaller in terms of square kilometers than, than Sweden.
Yeah, let's see. We, I think we just, we, I think we hit ten millions, but, ten millions, but. Um.
That's actually-
Yeah, ten twenty-three, right.
Sorry, go on. Anya?
No, I, I just, um, was gonna say, one, one kind of upside to that is really as, as, as you mentioned, Kima, is it, it just feels like, uh, even from a government's perspective, uh, you, you probably have it easier to, to do like meaningful politics if you wanna. That depends a bit, but, um-
Hundred percent, one hundred percent.
And also it goes vice versa, because, uh, since I've been here, cause normally I've been living, I guess, most of my life in either France or Germany, which are not, uh, as big in population, but still like, uh, tenfold than, than, than Austria approximately, right? So, um, so you feel a little bit like a drop in the ocean, definitely there. And when you're in a small country like Austria, and especially if you, if you take like the, the regional government into account or policies, you feel like you could do stuff, you know, and, and it, it could, it could have a little impact or something. You feel a little less, uh, powerless, let's say, than, uh, than in, in bigger, bigger places.
I mean, so when, when, uh, say some, again, maybe this is just the pessimistic side of me, but, when a friend of mine says, you know, you know, in Sweden or in Austria, they have free education. I'm like, yeah, but Austria is not even, it doesn't even have a population of one state in Nigeria.
But I mean, the thing is, you have small countries that are still in big trouble, so size doesn't mean everything, you know? Because if you look at Central Asia, Asia, like, I don't know how many people there in Kyrgyzstan or Tajikistan, but I'm assuming it's really not so much.
Yeah.
And they're like in, in, they're like, they're, they're far behind there, but-
Yeah, I would, I would say that, that services-
Historically, we can't really compare what's been happening in, in those regions, and in ours for sure.
Definitely. I mean, I mean, it's like, the, the social, the welfare state of Sweden is, has been built over the last ninety years. Before that, we were a very segregated and very poor rural commu- community, you know, the industrial. So we, we benefited from the fact that, I mean, Sweden benefited from the fact that we didn't take part in the Second World War. Right? We were a neutral country. So whereas the, the rest of Europe was in ruins, and the economies were shattered and, and, and all of that, the Swedish, uh, war was being, powered both the Nazi Germany and the Allied and the Russians. So we sold over to everyone, right? Because, because they, during the war and also after the war, the, the, the metal industry, uh, needed to be, to, to, you know, to, to work on full capacity, right? And also we had a lot of wood, because we're a fairly big country. I mean, we are not so densely populated and, 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 and we have, we have a lot of forest, and we sold, we sold, uh, paper, mass and, and wood to, to the entire Europe and made shitloads of money out of it. And, and so we could build a welfare state. Uh, you know, beginning sixties, seventies, uh, free education, free healthcare, everything, you know, all, all things, uh, like that. Uh, but that's, that's just a coincidence, you know, um, because we stayed out of the war. Out of coincidence, Hitler didn't wanna invade us, uh, for some reason.
Yeah, I was saying, that's very, that's very fortunate, cause when you said you guys were neutral, I just thought, well, that just means Hitler wasn't looking for you guys.
Yeah, yeah.
For, for, for us, it's kind of, uh, we wanted to be invaded.
Yeah, exactly. The answers-
Kind of bad.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, uh,
Yeah.
No, but, but, I mean, he did invade Norway, for instance, right? So, so, because Nor- Norway was strategically important to, 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 to reach Russia and Nova Siberia.
I guess he would have gotten to Sweden eventually if things worked out.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah.
But they're just, uh, priorities, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, so, yeah, no, but, but, uh, but the thing is that, you know, uh, I mean, we can prolong this discussion for, for forever. Like, the things that we fought for during the seventies and eighties are also the things that we do not want to have anymore. You know, because as, as the Swedish population grows richer and richer, we are actually envy of people today that, that do benefit from the welfare state. Do you understand? Like, we nowadays, uh, if you get, uh, unemployment benefits, or if you get, uh, get free healthcare, people are talking about freeloaders and why do they get things for free and stuff like that, you know? So the same, the very same reforms that allowed, uh, the Swedish, Swedish population to become more, more educated and live a, a good life, and, and, you know, a very safe life, these are the, the, the benefits that we are, are not keen to give others, you know? Uh, because we say that it costs too much. So there's a big, big unrest in Sweden.
It's sim- similar in a lot of, uh, that was a huge, uh, huge debate in, in France, actually. But also because Fred says done a very lousy job at, at integration, uh, integrating its immigrants, and then, and then, of course, uh, now they're called like slackers and whatever, and nobody, nobody wants to invest, uh, in them, but you're like, well, we gotta start somewhere, and, uh, you know, that's the way to go. And actually economically, there's been like, uh, economists that analyzed the issue and definitely like showed or demonstrated that, um, one is, like, one plus one is not equal to in, uh, when it comes to the economy. So you can't say that because you have three hundred thousand people immigrating, that it's like three hundred thousand jobs less. That's not how it works.
That's not how it works, no.
Um, but that's, no, nobody wants to, kind of, no, nobody wants to, to agree, like, or, or, yeah.
Yeah, but, and also that, like, during the pandemic, there was a big dissonance among the right, outright, because like, I, there are certain areas in Sweden where eighty percent of the, of the, uh, of the workforce in health, healthcare industry and services are foreign, right? Uh, the, 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 these, these are jobs that ethnic Swedes don't like to do because they're, you know, hard.
Exactly.
And, and, um, you know, so when, when, when people take care of you while you're sick, that's okay, but when the same people's mother, uh, so, so, so just, okay, but without prolonging this debate, like, on Facebook, there is this phenomena in Sweden that foreign, um, foreign-born or immigrants are posting, uh, posting, um, post on Facebook saying, "I immigrated to Sweden two, twenty fifteen or twenty fourteen, and I went to school, and I work, and I pay my taxes," and then everybody cheers, "Oh swell, how good of you that you know." But, but the thing is that, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm very happy for those guys, uh, and girls that, that came here and, and, you know, they, they get a good life and everything, because that's what, what immigrants are looking for. I'm an immigrant myself, right? But what if, what if, uh, that person is sick, ill, handicapped, and, and, and stuff like that, and they can't work? And they can't, uh, can't do certain things, right? Or they are hit by trauma from war or, or whatever, do you understand? And they can't post something like that on Facebook. Are they worth less than the ones who are working? Of course they're not, right? We, we're all equal. And sometimes, so sometimes when I read those posts from, from immigrants that they, they, I don't know if they're looking for, for approval from the majority, uh, population or whatever, do you understand? It, but it, it makes me a little sick, because for, for everyone, that is a success story. There is another person that according to those standards wouldn't be a success story. But everyone and every woman and every man is a star. We're all unique and we have our, our own value. So, so bragging about that, "Oh, I came here, I'm not a burden to, on your society, please welcome me with a, with a hat in my hand, you know, on my bare knees." To that, I say, fuck off. I would never do such a thing, you know, I would, I mean, I am who I am, and everybody is who they are. And you know, a Swedish criminal and a foreign criminal, they're both criminals, right? Uh, a, a rapist that has a different ethnic background than Swedish is still a rapist, right? And they should both, both be put to jail, in- independently of what eth- eth- ethnic background you have, right? And, and this, you know, and this, this idea of somebody forfeiting its rights to, to, to be a guest in Scandinavia for some reason is, is, is weird, you know? Because like, like, we have sent people out from Sweden to Darfur, where they were executed on arrival. Because the Swedish, uh, Foreign Ministry said that Darfur was a safe place to extradite people to, you know? Uh, and, and we shouldn't grant asylum to people, uh, from that country, and they were killed, you know?
We, we almost had the same, same issue with, uh, my, one of my two adopted, uh-
Yeah, you mentioned that, yeah.
From Somalia, and it was the same issue because given, uh, given the adaptation she's done here, if she's sent back to Somalia, it's gonna be nightmare for her. But they were, they were saying, like, the judge was saying, "That's not a problem, she can go back, no problem."
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Anyway, politics, people, that's politics. So we should, we should change, change the tag to debate, I guess.
God, God wins low, right, Pedro? Yeah.
I'm sorry, um, on the subject of, uh, the, cause I noticed that, Carl, Carl, um, added us to a a group on Slack?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, um, I just wanted to be, uh, Crusader as the product owner, isn't it?
Uh, we need to discuss it. Like, I mean, I just got proactive creating the group and probably missing people.
Yeah.
I mean, we have to decide first of all if that makes sense, and then that can be updated.
No, 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 I think, I think it does make sense. I mean, the group, yeah? The group definitely makes sense.
Um, I, I think, I think Tassilo and, uh, Tassilo and Crusader would be together, the product owner, so to say.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so, so what I understand, uh, Crusader is, 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 uh, very much interested in this, in this blockchain part of expanding this, 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 uh, project with, with, uh, these kind of functionality, am I right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right, right.
Uh, but, but I guess generally for like architecture questions or whatever, who, I guess he's always happy to, uh, huh?
Good stuff, good stuff. That's a very nice segue to, to the project. Thank you, Kima, for, for pulling us into that discussion and away from, from politics. Uh, uh, Anya, uh, you, you made some progress on installing the thing, and Pedro, you also made progress. Could you tell, talk us through what happened? Uh, uh, where are you?
I didn't make much progress. I, the, the Tassilo repository is installing correctly, and it's launching correctly. So it is compiling, but when trying to do it with the Agile Venture repository, I ended up having the same error as you did.
Okay. Anya, did you?
Uh, yeah, uh, to be honest, I only tried, because I, I saw that, uh, there was a trouble with, uh, with the other ones, so I only tried with Tassilos and it worked, uh, well. Except for the, I guess, for the Mapbox token, uh, that I guess I have to put in now that I know what it is. Um, but yeah, otherwise it, it works fine. It, um, it spins up and everything, so, yeah.
Okay, so how about, uh, right, so, yeah, so, so I was thinking that we could, uh, make, uh, let's see, there's a license here. Good, I can merge this. So Tassilo created a pull request with the license text here. You can just pull this in into the project repo. How can we fix this? So, so Pedro, what do you think? Why is that, that you can run his code and I couldn't, and that? What is the, could we, like, uh, is there a difference between between, uh, package JSON, or wha- what's the difference? What's, what's the big thing here?
Uh, I did a little bit of research, not much, but I think the problem is due to the Babel runtime.
Mm-hmm.
And I s- I didn't directly compare pa- package logs, but I saw that runtime in, in the, in Tassilo's repository is always above seven.
Hmm.
Actually, it's not always a good, so, I'm just checking.
I would have many questions.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure what's happening, yes.
Go on, uh, Carl, if you have questions, let's ask fire away, brother. We all have questions.
What NPM version do we need to be on? What version of things need to be on? So I only cloned the repo and just ran NPM, and I see that, um, the log file was on Logfile version two, and I've got Logfile version one, and I don't know if I need to upgrade my NPM. So those are the first questions.
Right. Uh, we, we, we addressed this last, yesterday, but ne- never really got into, uh, a good solution, right? Because, so Tassilo was running on Node version ten-ish, ten-something, right? Uh, uh, and, uh, I was running, yeah, and I, you, you, Pedro, you were on sixteen-four, right?
Yep.
Right. Yeah.
I'd like to assume that the Node version won't make too much difference if we're all using something new.
Right. I don't, the Node, uh, and, yeah, it shouldn't. Actually, you know what? Uh, let me just see, I, I'm outside of this thing here, right? So let me just clone this again. Sure, you know what? First of all, now that we have a license, uh, we can open this now. We don't have to, to have it as a private, uh, private repository. This will give us access to, uh, um, to Zen Hub again.
Uh, just a, just a question, a quick one. Um, I think Tassilo mentioned today, or he asked at some point if, uh, because he changed, I think, his own version that was, uh, private, given the feedback that he received. And then he said, "Maybe you can try moving the, uh, that version once again to you, Thomas." Did you, did you see that, uh, that message, or?
Uh, let's see, that was on the Work the Web channel, right?
Uh, yeah, exactly, Work the Web, uh, I guess, uh, today, twelve fifty PM.
Right, hey, so I tried out installing the repo which is on Agile Ventures, and I got the same issue with Fragments too. When I tried installing the repository from my GitHub once again, it worked. I see that, okay. I saw that some versions of packages within the package JSON were different from the Agile ones, Agile Ventures one, I don't know why. So I just uninstalled some unnecessary packages and updated my GitHub repository. Maybe you can try moving that one once again, Thomas. Right. Uh, right, and you said that you cloned Tassilo's version and spin it uploads, okay, right, okay. Uh, right. Could you send a link to Tassilo's repo in, in, in this chat?
Uh, yes, sure, sure.
Then we can just, let me just
All right.
Do this really manually. You know what? I can do this instead. Uh, so let me just, so, but, but the question is about, about open sourcing, uh, because I would like to be able to fork this. We can open this now that it, that it is, I mean, when, when it's-
He picked, he picked, uh, license.
Right, so I, I'm gonna just open this up now.
Uh, yeah, yeah, G, uh, G, G, GPM, no.
Yeah, GP, yeah, GPL, right. Uh. If you, if you wanna, so, you know about Linus Torvalds, you know, the guy that invented Git and, and Linux? Uh, he doesn't, doesn't have much, oh, that's private, sure. He doesn't have much, uh, positive things to say about, uh, Stelman, the guy that with the, with the Free Software Foundation. The guys behind the GPL, um, he, uh, he thinks they're like crazies or something, uh.
Aren't they all crazy in that area? In that city?
I guess the, the nerds, the war of the nerds, you know? Uh, right, now I can, uh, allow forking. Allow forking now? What? Settings, issues, responses, project. Yeah, now I can fork this. I'm gonna check and drive it. Okay, okay, good. Okay. Right, so my computer is gonna act up soon, because this is, um, I'm on like seventy percent capacity at this point. But I will do git clone this one, right, and I will just go on and grab this. Issue here. Uh, cd send, and then, uh, git remote add, uh, upstream. This, and now I have my own, like, if you, if I check my remotes, I have my own that is called Origin, and then we have upstream, which is the, the Agile Ventures one. And I will now take a peek at this guy. Right. Um, and we can basically go into the package JSON here. And we go to package JSON here. And take a look at this. So he changed the name to send dev. Okay, uh, try true dependencies, right. So he, he deleted quite a few, well, he deleted AtlasKit. He has this left. Okay. So there are a few differences here. Hmm, okay, well, what I can do is, I can just grab this and open this up. It could be a bit hacky. I'm thinking that what I can do is I can use his package JSON, what, before I even run my, my NPM install, do you understand? And then I should in principle get his, his versions, right? Shouldn't I?
Uh, so, sorry again?
I mean, if I take, if I take his, his package JSON, the one that he just updated earlier today.
Yep.
Before I run, you know, I cloned this, this version, this from the, the Agile Ventures one.
Yep.
And if I run NPM install, I should get these dependencies and not the ones that were not working for me yesterday.
Yeah, I, I think so. I would, or at least I, I did it like that, just to git clone and then
Yeah.
NPM install.
Yeah. Well, that will take a while, but we can do that. Um.
Uh, just a question, like the Mapbox access token, uh, that Tassilo sent us earlier.
Hmm?
Do you put it in the dot N file, uh, instead of the, okay?
Yeah.
It's supposed to show me the map in the background.
Uh, in principle, yeah.
Hmm, okay. Did you get that to run, Pedro?
The one from Tassilo?
Um, did you use the Mapbox access token and do?
Hmm, yep.
Okay, I, I also have the app, the web app functioning, but I, I can't see the map in the background.
Mine throws out an error saying you don't have the token for the Mapbox GL.
Um, yeah, I had that at the beginning, but from the video from, uh, Thomas yesterday, I created the dot N file. And then I added, uh,
React app, Mapbox, access token.
And then the React app DB base URL, uh, with the URL, and then actually it worked.
I don't have that one.
Uh, I can post it in the chat.
Yes, please.
So now the only thing missing for me is to see the map, I guess.
Right, and the second setting, there was another setting that was React app, uh, Mapbox, what was it?
Access token. I have that one already, though.
Okay.
I think, I think it should work now.
Yeah, for me, it only worked when I added the second line as well.
No, it's still breaking for me.
Really? Okay.
Says an API access token is required to use Mapbox GL. I believe the React app Mapbox access token is not being passed.
What do you have exactly? React app? What do you have exactly? React app Mapbox access token is equal to and then do you have
P K stuff.
The one that he sent earlier?
Yeah.
Okay.
This. Right. Did you restart your server?
Yeah, I just did. Should the dot M is not meant to be inside source, right?
No, 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 it's in the root folder. Small E N V, right.
Yes, dot E N V.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Mm, okay. At the beginning, it even worked for me when I had the the four Xs just for just as a place holder.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, the web app, uh not the map. I can't see the map, but I still can see it right now.
That's weird.
But the web app was working without it's magic.
It is. It is. No, it's not. It's not magic. It's fucked up. We need to get this to work.
It's a good sign. It means we have we have good, we have a lot of work to do.
Yeah, exactly.
Which is what we wanted. I mean, anyway.
Yeah. Yes, Carl.
Crusader is asking how how you guys are liking the project.
Awesome, we love it. We love it.
While he's in deep chill mode, uh.
Carl, go ahead. Go ahead.
My question before we do N P M install, like is there a minimum version of N P M that we should have or is N P M actually
We we don't know answer to that question yet, unfortunately. But I would I would, you know, I unless you do the same thing that I just did, which is copying over the N P M, the package JSON, sorry, I would hold off win in in installing this. If I make this to work now, I will create a P R and merge it into the Agile Ventures version and then we will hopefully be able to uh to get into a state that everyone can 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 use this uh.
And the same, go from the same
But 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 it's it's fairly safe to say you should probably go on on the edge, I mean the latest N P M and the latest or one of the late Node versions. Uh so I am I am on Node uh sixteen five and N P M um seven nineteen. And Pedro, is that similar to what you had?
It's sixteen dot five for me and one second and seven point eighteen point four.
Yeah, so I'm 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 seven nineteen point four, so it's pretty much the same. Uh right, so I'm gonna create uh the dot N file, so I have it. And um w- it was this React app D B there. This, so I need to recreate. And then there was the other one was React app and then Mapbox. And then what was it more, Pedro?
Uh React pa- uh React underscore app underscore Mapbox underscore access underscore token.
Right, and that would be the one that we just used, so I'm gonna keep it. I mean, it's it's limited to local host, but we don't need to expose that. Uh. Right. Let's see. Okay, so that's closed. Okay, so yarn start. And let's see if this one will fly or if we're gonna get into the same shithole like yesterday. Do 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 do. It's exciting, folks. It is exciting. Starting. Just opened up a new tab for me. Here it is. Right. Oh my god. Did it take a long time for you guys too or is it only me?
It takes a little bit.
Yeah, it it does.
Thank you. It makes me feel so much better.
Nice bird.
Yeah, whose bird is that?
That's mine.
Oh. Hey, so so uh Pedro kicked my ass in chess yesterday, so thanks for that. But the bigger question, did you manage to eat all those forty two pieces or forty three pieces?
Yeah, when I told you I was done, I was done.
Oh, that that, okay. And that's so so that's when he really started to kick my ass because
Yeah.
uh you know, before he was actually eating, so he was like holding back.
Three minutes is not a lot.
Yeah.
Uh just a quick update, the the map works now on online, so the web app and the ma- uh and the map.
Fantastico. That's awesome. That's awesome. So
Anya, did did you get yours from the uh Agile Ventures or from Thassilo?
The, you mean the Mapbox access token?
No, no, the the entire
No, 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 the the application.
Ah, no, 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 no. I I took it from Thassilo because I was expecting that I would have no more success uh than uh knowledgeable people with uh with the Agile Ventures one, so I just wanted to make sure I was able to to reproduce the steps uh with Thassilo's version. But I I took it from later today after Thassilo made his changes.
Hmm. So again, if this, if my you know, i- if this works for me, I will push up those changes to to Agile Ventures and that, then you can, you know, use it from there, probably. Um
Yep. Sounds good.
If it ever starts, you know.
Yeah, patience, patience. Uh I had the impression that somehow it worked faster on my Brave browser than the the Google Chrome one.
Hmm.
Uh so that may make a slight difference as well, but it's slow even even so.
Yeah.
We have the time to eat forty sushi in the meantime.
Forty three.
Forty three, sorry.
And play chess at the same time. Six games I won. One of them, I almost won the second one, another one, but I was you were like on what, one second left and I ran out of time, right, Pedro?
Yeah, yeah. You you were ahead on time, but
Yeah, but then I I started to think too much.
I started pre-moving as well.
Yeah, okay. Uh but I won one and lost five, so uh
That was still a positive rating win for you, because every time I lose against you, I lose fourteen, and every time I win, I I win two.
Ah, ah. Oh, yes, yes.
I was on a deficit of, you know.
Oh shit. Well, I will I will probably, you know, challenge you again. I don't know if today, but I need I need to learn. I need to, you know, uh I try to play like five or six or seven games a day, like three or five minutes games. Just just as recreation, so I don't, but I don't study theory or anything, I don't have time to do that, so I just play it by ear. Um which uh I wa- I had I had hopes to spend yeah, so so I had hopes to to spend some time on chess this summer, but it never happened, unfortunately. Perhaps this winter. But I do, I watch Hikaru and and Gotum Chess. I think that this this New York guy is kinda, he's entertaining.
Gotum Chess with his hot takes and stuff.
Yeah, yeah. He has strong opinions about stuff, you know, I like that. Carl, go ahead. Carl?
Carl, you're muted.
Yes, sorry. So about the project, I was gonna ask, uh can we like pin the version of Node and N P M in the JSON, I mean in the package JSON or somewhere? That anyone who copies it, that will that we all use the same version, that it's in the project?
Uh yeah, uh as soon as we get it to work, uh there there uh
So I know it from Rails, like in a J M file you can say which
I know, I know. Uh yes, I think you can pin, but there there might be some problems with with pinning uh uh Node J S projects because I read somewhere some, so so usually we don't, you don't do that. But which is in a way not, I I I I assume that there would be, and there are benefits in doing that. But there are s- different environments uh you know, where Node is not working the same, like on, but but we can try that. We let's, we can definitely try it. Um
So what is the typical version when people are working on a project? Like, what's common?
There is no common. I mean not to my knowledge, I would say that that it's uh it's it differs from pro- project to project. There are extensions like the uh I I just ran into this issue uh a few days ago. I was I was adding an extension to 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 Mocha and Chai and I was running a fairly late uh Node version, fifteen something, and it just didn't work. Didn't give me any error, nothing at all. I switched to sixteen five and it started to work uh all of the sudden. Uh so so you know, it there's no, as you know, there's no no real uh uh
Okay, but what our project will advise that everyone has a latest version of
Uh we we think so, but we don't know that yet, Carl. It's too early to for me to say. Yeah. Uh Jason Webdev, yes. So I use N V M and a lot of people use N V M, I guess. And if they don't, I'm gonna talk them through setting up N V M. So N N V M is a Node version manager that allows you to run multiple versions of Node on your computer, which makes switching between Node versions uh a breeze. So uh that's the um that's the idea here. Uh
I was reading that one could add an N V M R C file and then that that would enforce that everyone has the same version.
Yeah, yeah. We could do, we could probably do that. And yeah, so that's what we use in in Rails, for instance, right? So uh when when, uh that's what Jason Webdev just just suggested in Twitch, uh N V M R C. So uh in in Rails we do that with Ruby, so every time you C D into into that folder, you automatically switch over to to that uh Ruby version or or Rails version. Uh so that's a good um that's a good suggestion, Carl. Um if you can do a little bit of research, how to add those, uh I like what's the format is what what format the the N V M R C file should be in and how how what what to put in there, that would be great. Uh I haven't used that before, so uh that's a good to-do thing. We should definitely add that as a to-do too.
Wow, did something just happen?
Yeah, uh right. I just got H T M L to image missing. Uh right, I don't know if he removed that, um H T M L to image. Probably he did that. Uh let's see. Uh right, so scream share is using H T M L to to image, but it's not um it's not present in package JSON, but you didn't, you guys didn't get that. Apparently, you didn't. Well. I just did. Right, so you're, uh sorry, N P M. I uh S right, so we need to add this and then we have to go through the whole fucking thing again. Uh uh right. But Carl, if you if you want, you can add this, you know, you can add this N V M R C file uh and um once you're set up with the with the project and add that. So so wh- whenever we come up with an idea like this, we 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 need to add this to the to the Zen Hub uh rip- you know, tracker. So we don't forget that, basically. Uh uh if that makes sense, people.
So you're saying now that the the project is not private, Zen Hub should work, so I could probably
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Absolutely. I did open this now, so it's it's definitely it should work too.
What's that uh command when N P M install, what is minus S?
Save.
Oh, oh, okay.
It's just a shorthand. Hey, you the you the uh you the you the you the N P M queen, you the N P M queen.
No, no.
You're the same thing.
What are you asking me for?
It ju- I I I've I've just been doing what I've been told by Stack Overflow.
You know, less, so we said we're typing, you know, N P M install, save dev, you just do this and it's the same thing.
Yeah, okay. I didn't know. Yeah, because save dev is actually quite a pain to write, so
Yeah, I mean, it's like well, let's save dash D E C, eight, eight characters. That's seven to make. The fewer characters
When I redo your videos, that's a thing I appreciate, that I see a lot of shortcuts that I kind of like. I like, wow.
I I always say that the fewer keystrokes, the better.
Hmm.
Agreed.
I mean, it's not that that at this stage it will really matter for me, I think, because I'm not that fast anyways, but yeah.
Zen Hub is telling me that if, okay, let's uh while this is doing its thing, let's go to Zen Hub. Zen Hub. Zen Hub. Right. So we have Mike with us, so Mike, you recommended this, it's your fault.
Uh don't hide away behind that mute button. Play the music.
Yeah. I speak and it comes.
Where is that? Come on.
So you're on a free account, Thomas?
Uh yeah. Agile Ventures S N F, right, let's see. Let's see.
By the way, I got mine working as well, the one from Thassilo's repo. I was adding the dot M file to the Agile Ventures repo.
Oh.
Oh.
W S L is getting quite confused because one thing is open in the Visual Studio code and I was in another folder in the the terminal in Visual Studio code, so
Yeah, okay.
Uh Carl, I I got I got my Zen Hub to work.
Can you share the link in the chat? Maybe I got the wrong link or something like that.
Okay. Uh here's the link.
So there are two posts with tests, correct, Anya?
Uh on the on the web app.
In this testing uh D B
There is a test test and a test law, maybe some blah blah.
It's simply dummy text.
I know.
Yeah, that's what's said there.
It's not German.
That's what's written there. Laura Nielsen, it's simply dummy text of the printing and type setting industry. Very well.
Now we know more.
Ever since the fifteen hundreds, so
Or just zoomed in on Daimler again. Interesting. And right next to it is ExtraFit. It's probably, it's probably not by by chance. People working at Daimler did that.
Right.
At this point, I would love to not read German.
Yeah? At this point, so you mean you didn't want to enter anything
Not really. I didn't have a lot of curiosity now.
That's a good
Oh, 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 I'm getting somewhere, folks.
No, that that's where we are right now.
Ah.
Wow.
Yeah, and now you can open local host on browser.
Awesome.
That took a while.
Yeah, la yay, we got something. And we have. Come on, give it to me. This this output is actually really good, because one of the chores that we can have, or we can, you know, we can.
Is to get get rid of all of this.
Yeah, but but it's like, you know, we should create a chore for every file, because so that, because, you know, so. If you try to fix everything at the same time, uh, then 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 you will, you know, get into trouble. But if like scream dialogue, perhaps these could be bundled into one chore, right? Fix user actions, home JS and uh and st- stud tile dialogue, whatever, uh. And and then then, but but I think one PR per per per.
Defined but never used, okay.
Right. Uh, and this is pretty e- easy, but but it it is usually a good way to learn. About the codebase, to silence those 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 errors. And and uh, let's see. So that's good, uh, and then we could have on cookie guest, we need abs- uh, accept Iran, sure, why not, uh. Too harsh idea for I'm Kölner, I, sure, absolutely. Boom, there we go, uh, let's just open up the dev tools.
I understand test, that that's 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 German for me, that I understand, I guess. Maybe that's not German, maybe you don't even say test in German.
Yeah, they say test, so you know some German, here we go. I mean, German and English are.
Easy.
Eh, like, they're not like so similar or close, but they do.
I mean, Good Morning sounds like good morning.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they they are, I think, both part of the Germanic language group.
Yeah, yeah.
But the but it it goes up a little further in history, so that's why they're not that close either, but they're definitely some.
To be closer to English than German.
Yeah, but like if you can speak German, you understand so much Dutch, I think more than if you, more than if you speak English, so.
Oh, definitely.
Uh, but yeah, so it's kind of something.
And then Dutch is fairly similar to the Scandinavian languages also, right?
Yeah.
So so we we got a lot of, A, we're the same language of of of, or group of languages. But then we also got a lot of influence through Hansa trading, uh, you know, in the sixteen seventeen hundreds. Uh, so so there's quite a few German words mixed in into Swedish because of that, that period of time. Uh, however, if we just focus a little bit on the project itself, just go back to, um. Uh, I just opened the the console in my dev tools and as you can see, there are a few warnings, not, well, there's a lot of warnings and some. And some some some, well, error-ish kind of thing, the red red warnings. Uh, so this is also something that needs to be fixed at some point, there's a, there's like a map or an iterator that doesn't add the key prop. And then there is another prop that is not, uh. Well, the prop user is marked as required in projects page, but its value is undefined, so we need to fix that at some point. But other than that, it does work, and it seems like the map is showing for me as well. Uh, so that's good.
That's a good start, yeah.
That's a good start, right, so now that we see this. Now, when this works, let's see if we can.
What repo are you working on?
Well, I'm working on the Agile Ventures one, uh, because.
And it's working?
Because I just, I just copied the the uh.
npm.
And I copied the the, no, not the lock, the the package JSON. But in that package JSON, there was one dependency missing anyway, so I just had to add this manually, so.
It's HTML2 image, right?
Yeah, so I will just check out a new branch, uh, and I will call, uh, uh. Package fix.
But y- your name from the, so we're not using the Senth one, no, we're using Senth client, is that correct?
Right, right, so git add this and then git C I A M.
And then Senth will have the backend, is that correct?
Uh, once again?
So we have a a Senth um repository in Agile Ventures and you're using Senth client?
We have, we have one that is called Senth client, I renamed it yesterday.
Oh, you renamed it?
Right.
Just to confuse you a little.
Got me off guard here.
It worked.
But you were there yesterday, weren't you?
I don't remember the renaming, to be honest.
You were focused on your sushis by then.
Or wait, no, he was waiting for the sushis, so he hasn't gotten there. Hit push.
Let's see, we have to read me.
So 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 let's let's focus for just a second, so so what I did now, I have my own fork. Of the Agile Ventures Senth client uh repository, right? And on my, um, I'm working on, and so I cloned my fork to my computer, right? So when I, now, I I did a, I I checked out a new branch and I called it package fix. And I made a commit with the updated package JSON, right? And so now I will uh push to my own repository, right, to my own fork. So I will say dot git push origin uh package fix. And that will create a branch on my fork, we still keep the the central repository clean of of different branches. And what happens when I push up a new branch? To my own fork, if everything is set up correctly, I will get this message in my terminal. Create a pull request for package fix on GitHub by visiting this URL, right? So what I can do now, this is my own personal flow, I usually just copy this, uh. Sorry, I, yeah, I cop- I copied this URL. And I just say in my uh terminal, open and paste this URL. And hit enter, and then I am automatically rerouted over to, um. Uh, to GitHub, uh, and uh, an interface where I can create this pull request. And here, we have to be very mindful of what the base repository is. And that would be the Agile Ventures Senth client, that is the repo to which I want to submit new code. And the main branch, because that is the branch that we are using as our our default branch. And I want to make that pull request from To- Tochman Senth client. And the package fix branch, right, so I'm taking my package fix. And want and I want to integrate or push that uh, that code into the the main branch of the. Of the. Of of the original repo, and so here, uh, I usually just say, uh, like, give this repository a title. Uh, so update uh package, add dependencies in. Package, oh, update the dependencies, basically, that's enough, and then I use Markdown to. Um, to format a little bit of of uh, of a pull request description, there's not much. Uh, not much to the description here, uh, pen. Then sees.
And the only difference here is the, is the package JSON, it's a small PR. Only, only one file has been, uh, been changed. So, um, on the conversation, there is a button. And Pedro just said, I approve, for of which, for which I thank you very much. And since I am a great fan of never eating my own food, no, I'm kidding, never merging my own code. I would like somebody to, to click this, this green button and merge this, uh, into, into the code. And Pedro took the opportunity to do that as a true gentleman. He didn't wait for Anya to even, uh, try.
What is happening?
No, I'm kidding. Uh, and now this code is part of the, of the Agile Ventures Senth client. So now those changes are there. So if any of you has forked and cloned this, this, um, uh, this version, you need to, uh, you need to pull down from it. So, and listen carefully because this is important, just so we are on, all on the same page. If I go to my terminal now, I am still on the package fix, um, a branch, right? Where I made those changes. I need to, uh, do a checkout of my own main, main branch, right? And if I now do git log one line, we can see that the latest, the latest commit that I have on my main branch is the merge pull request fifty-four, add license one, right? Which is the, the commit that we did after merging Tassidus thing. That's what I have on my, on my branch. But here, the last commit is, uh, not the, the, uh, merge pull request fifty-four, there are two other commits. Do you understand? So in order for me to have those commits on my local computer, I need to do this. Git pull upstream main. Like this. And now, if I now do git log one line, I can see that I have those, those commits on my computer. And then you ask, what the fuck is upstream? Well, if you do git, if I do git remote dash V.
So you have your own, right?
Yeah, I have two, two repos, uh, two remotes. The origin is pointing to mine, as you can see GitHub Tokman Senth client. But upstream is pointing to Agile Ventures. And so you might ask, how do I get that? Well, you have to get added yourself. So you basically need to add this as a remote. Does that make sense?
It does.
So just, uh, for me to clarify, because I'm still not so well versed in, in Git. But, so basically we are going to fork, uh, everyone forks their own version of Agile Ventures. So that's why we need to set up origin as our own GitHub and, and upstream as the Agile Ventures one.
Yeah. Well, when you fork, Anya, so when you click on fork on, on, on GitHub, you will be automatically taken to your fork in your browser. Then you grab the, the URL on your own version and you clone your own fork down to your computer. Do you understand? That's what you do.
Yep, okay.
Okay. And then you need to still navigate back to the Agile Ventures Senth client version, which is the, the main, uh, the main one. And you still need to take this, this URL, you know, copy this one. And you have to issue this command, git remote add upstream and then the URL. And hit enter. Then you will have two, two, uh, two ups, two, two remotes.
Uh, just, just a question because, uh, I remember using that command if I have, like you've been doing the, the, the couple of last times. When, uh, when you start doing stuff locally and then you wanna create a repo and push it up.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then of course we, we call it git remote add origin and then, um, the, the, the link. Uh, so are origin upstream like specific words could you like?
It's standard, you can call it anything.
You can call it anything.
Could you still add?
Yeah.
So yeah, so you could add just even another one. I mean, if you want, if you get very.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but the thing is that if you, if you cloned your own fork, your origin is already set automatically.
Uh, yeah, because I say it, right? I, I, uh, I mean, it's, it's like the, the, I guess the reciprocal to doing git remote add origin.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Okay.
And Thomas, this adds one more step of complexity than rather just use branches on the actual.
Okay. So, so let's, let's address that because I got that question on Twitch as well. What is the upside? So the upside is access rights in, and, and now you guys are added as admins, uh, uh, to, to this repository, the, the original team here. But in open source, open source software, you don't want to ha- gi- give this kind of access to, uh, to people. Uh, I, I was thinking about this yesterday because I got this question yesterday as well and I didn't answer this, this clearly. For me, having people fork and then clone themselves and leave the golden, the, the main repository intact is, is a, is a, is just good practice to, to keep people, to do not having, to give people access rights to, to their repository, uh, because it can be misused. Do you understand? Uh, and, and, uh, you know, in an open source project, there are people from all over the place and you never know, uh, who, who merges what and who does what and so on. So I would, I, with, with a large dev team, I would say there is a clear benefit from not allowing too much, you know, not granting too much access rights.
There is one thing I still, okay, yeah, no, I just, uh, because I am still, I've only been using Git mostly solo, uh, which is not really the purpose of it, but anyways, um. Um, what I don't understand is like the pull request, I guess someone needs to have specific rights to accept the, like to merge the pull request, right?
Yep.
Uh, so isn't that clean enough in a way? Because if you have a branch, you don't even need to kind of include that branch at, at any point in time in the main.
Yeah, but in order to be able to create that PR, you have to be able to push up to that repo. Do you understand?
But can you push up? I mean, you can push up to your branch, yes, but you.
No, no, no. Well, well, it depends because if you, uh, you can push up to, to Agile Ventures because I gave you admin rights. Do you understand? But there, there, you, you can, uh, you can restrict that access to people you don't know to not be able to push up to this repository. They can only, they can fork and push up to their own. And then you have a clear separation. You, you, it's like, you, yeah, do whatever you want on your own fork. But here, you, the only thing you can do is to create a PR from your fork to mine. And it's up to me to accept it or not, you know, or up to a project manager.
Maybe I could give an example and maybe that.
I, I, I just think that one thing that was not exactly clear in my mind is I thought that, uh, specific gra- uh, branches went with a specific access rights, but apparently that's not the case.
Um, it is not. I think that you, we- well, there are, you, you, you can, apart from, from, so there are different access rights, uh, that, that can be set. You can allow people to create branches, but then you can protect certain ones like main branch that only a few people can, can, can merge and so on. Uh, I, I think it's cleaner to keep the separation totally, you know? Do whatever you want on your fork, submit PRs to, to the, to the main repository. I think that's the best, best way to, 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 to make sure that nothing bad happens. Pedro, you wanna give an example?
Yeah, I wanted to, to see if what I'm thinking right now makes sense. For instance, we have us about ten developers that have like the main contributions to the, this repo. But for instance, imagine you put out a tweet, hey, we're working on this open source, we want people to contribute. And you get two hundred people that start working on that code. And they create each one of them, one branch in the, the repo. You're gonna have two hundred branches in the main repo. Instead of each one of them having a fork and then creating the branch in there and not, uh, polluting the, the main one. Is that correct?
That is correct. And, and, and so I, I just, I recently took over a project that, that, you know, the website one project, where we had that. That the maintainer of this, this project that came after me, because I started it and then another guy took over, he allowed that to happen. When, which means that when I started to ta- take over now, we had approximately two hundred branches, right? Uh, there was not really, uh, there was no consistency in which one was being merged or not merged and how they were reviewed and all of that stuff. There was a big mess basically, right? So what I just did, I made a very executive decision. I just closed all of them, right? Independently of, of what was hap- going on, what happened. And, and that is a shame because, uh, I had to do it because it was, it was a, it was a mess, right? And, and, and I just couldn't, couldn't find, uh, no, very bad documentation about a, a, all of them and stuff. Which means that there was a lot of work that became undone. I mean, people are actually writing this code and we should have respect for that. Uh, and, and you know, just closing them, it feels really bad for me because, you know, there's, uh, uh, behind every line of code, there's a, there's a person, uh, that, that, that had to do it someday. Uh, and, and also the problem is that now, once I deleted those, those, um, those branches, the only place where this code exists is on the local hosts of these developers, right? If they had their own forks, then the code will still be in the cloud on their own forks. And they could resubmit that PR later on, do you understand? And I think that's much cleaner. You know, it's your work, your repo, your version, you keep it, you know? Um, so.
From this, I, I have a follow-up question regarding wha- what you just did before. So you, you created a pull request from a branch from your fork, which was not the main. Wouldn't it be better for some guys to first merge to your own main and then pull request your main to the main repo?
Uh, I would, I would say that it, it, it could work, uh, but I've never practiced.
Is there any advantage of that?
There is no advantage. The, 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 I'm just thinking about disadvantage. Well, you know, the, the name of the branch, um, kind of, kind of implies what, what sort of, you know, what we're dealing with.
Yeah.
And, and you know, you give it a good title. A lot of people are also using the number of the issue, you know, every, every, you know, trackers they, they gi- give, give IDs to, to those issues uh, as part of the branch name. I've never practiced that. I think it's too much, uh, administrative hassle to, to do that. But, uh, what you were saying that I would merge my feature branch into my main and then create a PR from my main to the, to the repo main is just one step. It just adds one step to the flow without actually adding much value. Uh, so I would probably advise against that. Never practiced it also.
So basically the main branch for you is only there for you to keep up with the repo you forked then?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And always, and I never create, uh, a, a PR from my main branch to the main branch, you know, when, when I see that. Actually, yeah, that, that's, 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 that's a point that is worth making. Like when, as a project manager, when I see that there is a PR made from a main branch to a main branch, that tells me that the developer didn't branch off to create a feature branch, which is in a way, uh, uh, a, a bad, bad practice, you know? So always go to the main branch, get the latest code with rebasing or pulling or merging from, from upstream. You create a feature branch, you work on it, you run your test, you do whatever. And then you create a PR to the, to the upstream. Uh, that's, that's, that's my, my take on this.
Yeah, just wanted to get that clear. Sounds good.
Yeah, it gets mu- much clearer, but I guess I will have to ask or re-ask those questions along the way. But it, it already, like, it sounds, it makes a lot of sense and, uh, it's already much clearer how it's supposed to work in, in that setup.
Cool. Uh, so now at this stage, I would say you guys can fork and, 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 and clone. And if you've already forked, you need to set up this upstream as a, you know, the Agile, Agile Ventures Senth client as your upstream and pull down from that to the main branch and run NPM install. Uh, to, to, uh, to get it to work, basically. Yay! Check out main branch, pull from upstream main, create a branch, create PR to upstream main. Yes, that's the, that's the spirit.
So, uh, and do I need, so because I'm never pushing to my own main. When I go to see my GitHub repo with the fork, it will always be with the first version that I forked, correct?
Yeah, unless you from time to time do that. That's a very good observation. You know, sometimes you, you need to do git push.
I'll just push.
Push, uh, origin, uh, main.
Yeah, after I pull from the.
Yeah, just to stay, just so your, your cloud storage stays, stays, uh, up to date. Um, and because, you know, especially with my setup here, you see, here I said that I'm two, two commits behind, behind, uh, or my main rip- upstream repo is two commits behind. And now that I pushed.
Your main origin repo.
Yeah, the origin repo, yeah, sure. Absolutely. And now I'm, uh, in sync, basically. Jason Webdev, does that, all of that make sense to you in terms of, uh, of flow? Um, it's one way to, of using, uh, I'm just addressing a comment on, on Twitch. It's one way of, of, of using, uh, Gitflow, uh, in a team.
So we could just create a, a script that issues both commands and you will always be updated, right?
Yeah, yeah. And it's actually not a bad thing, uh, to do that. There is these CLI commands for GitHub, uh, that, that can be, you can automate all of that stuff, you know? You are about to say something, Anya?
Uh, no, no, I, I think it's, uh, oh, it's interesting, but I, I won't manage to remember all of this now. But I, I think with practice, it should be fine.
Yeah, practice makes perfect.
Can I share my screen?
Sure.
Hope it works today. So you can see.
Mm-hmm.
This is me on Zenhub.
I, I have no problem accessing it weirdly.
But I have no idea why I have a problem.
Yeah.
Um.
Have, have you, have you tried accessing it from the GitHub side?
No, you just.
What you mean from the GitHub side?
Like when you go to the Senth project, probably. I don't know if there is.
Wait, how did you login to Zenhub?
With GitHub.
With GitHub, okay. And you are in the, uh, you are in the GitHub project.
Yeah.
Right. Why would this be happening?
And if I go to the account settings.
Windows problem.
Mine not as expired.
Yeah, I, that's exactly what I had yesterday. But if you just open up Agile Ventures now, what does that say?
Like, what exactly?
No, hold on. But if you jump, okay. That's weird.
Right.
Yeah, so they haven't put a link to Zenhub from.
No.
Also, I mean, apparently it's just me, right? Everyone else can access it.
Yes. So.
Yeah, I, I can.
Yeah, so I think you can, uh, wh- when, when you go to GitHub on Senth project, uh, I don't know if you still see your screen. Is it Senth or Zenf?
Uh, Zenf.
Zenf. It's called Zenf, okay.
Oh, you mean the Agile Ventures Senth client?
It means, uh, Mustard. So you guys go.
Well, you want me to go, Mike?
I, 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 I only know mustache. Or mustache. So on, uh, yeah. Uh, let me show you what I see. Because, uh, from my side, uh, I, on the, you see next to code issues, the blah, I'm able to see Zenhub on those tabs. And when I click on it.
Yeah, I don't see that. I don't see that either. So is this a Zenhub extension that you have log, uh, that you have installed or?
Probably.
Yeah, there's a, there's a Zenhub extension, uh, that you need to install to see that. But that's, that does, that, that doesn't seem like the problem that, that Carl is having. Uh.
Yeah, I don't have an extension here. It's all good.
Yeah.
Well, we don't have to get it working tonight. I just wanted to.
But that's a very good, you're raising an important thing here because everybody needs access to Zenhub, of course.
Yeah.
Uh, and I did open this up. This could be a cache thing, Carl, that, you know, because it, it was opened earlier today, do you understand? Uh, so you know, if you, you can't really do it now because you are in this, in this meet. But if you restart your Chrome or, you know, reboot your computer or something or clear cache or whatever, perhaps that, that, the, the browser cache, perhaps that would, 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 uh, fix the problem for you.
All right, so I'll try. I mean, it is, I'm the only one affected, so I do feel like it is for me to figure out right now.
Well, it's for us to fix it together, but yeah, we need to fix it. Uh.
Well, maybe the cache thing and otherwise I think, yeah, we definitely should all help, um.
I'll just try it in a different browser.
Mm-hmm.
That could be a, a step. Uh, you can try to access this from, from like Incognito window or, actually I can, we can, let's see if we can, uh, try to access this. If I open up an anonymous session. How would that look like? It is open, so. Let's see. Login, he asks me to login. Okay. Uh, but that's the same thing.
Now I'm getting the same thing in a different browser, but I guess I'll try Incognito mode.
Incognito in a different browser should be the same thing.
Yeah.
Guess.
Yeah, I tried in the private win- window and it works well for me.
Yeah.
Same.
Yeah.
Well, in the meantime, sorry, could someone else, um, I don't know, is there volunteer to add the note about NVMRC on Zenhub?
Yeah, I can.
Thanks.
Yeah, and also you could just create an issue with GitHub issues and it will show on Zenhub.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I, I, I'm gonna fix that, uh.
Okay.
NVMRC. Two points eight. Uh, let's see, uh, we should submit NVMRC.
So even on.
Yeah, looks.
Mode on a different browser, it's not working for me, but I'm gonna look into it like another day.
Right.
I'm, I'm ju- just something, something stupid, but did you maybe, I guess, start the, the, the Git project or? I'm, I'm just wondering how, how it's possible that you're affected, but I guess that couldn't be the reason, but yeah, no, because I'm the only one, I guess, that started, so.
Well, once I do figure out, figure it out, I'll share it on Slack. Even if it's just like I restart my PC and it works, whatever it is.
How do I nee- how do I add a labels? Can I add labels to this thing? I don't know how, uh, what, uh, why can't I add labels? Oh, there is labels here. Epic. Okay. No, okay, all right. Anyway, I will, I have to look at this at some point. I haven't used Zenhub too much, you know? I'm, I'm more of a GitHub tracker fan. But, right. You had a question? Clark Kent? Who's Clark Kent? Is that Shima?
Oh, Clark, Clark Kent is my idol.
Obviously it's Shima.
Oh, no, Shima, how did you know? That's my, it's my favorite hero.
How many of this, how many of these personas do you have, Shima?
Too many, too many. It's the, it's what happens when you, it's what happens when you grow up in a country with three hundred tribes.
To have to have three hundred personas?
Yep.
So, so Anya, so what, so if you say that Clark Kent is your favorite hero, does this mean that you're a DC, DC girl?
Hmm, I, I would say I'm, I'm just a, I'm just a Superman fan, so.
Yeah.
And I, I actually am very much indulging into the series at the moment. We're watching Smallville and I'm re-watching the Lewis and Clark adventures.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I used to watch them as a kid. I was allowed to stay, stay up later when, uh, on, on Tuesdays, it was coming in on French TV.
So, so, so A- Anya says NPM and I say Yon, she says DC and I say Marvel. We're like opposites here.
Uh, I just, just Superman.
I think it's very unfortunate that people have to think that way.
That's true.
Okay, so I'm the villain, I'm the villain here now.
Yeah, like we all read, we all read both Marvel and DC comics.
Stop the talk, Lex Luthor.
I'm, yeah. So Lex.
Lex, 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 I believe Lex's grandparents were from Sweden.
Yeah, really? So I, my favorite villain is, is.
That's precise.
My, my favorite villain in, in Marvel is Kingpin, which is Lex Luthor of the Marvel Universe, probably.
Ah, okay.
Uh, that's a bit of a stretch. He, he isn't as smart as Lex Luthor is.
Uh, he is not, he is not.
Lex Luthor is pretty twisted.
Yeah, but I, I love, I like the Dordville series, the Dordville character and, and Kingpin, you know, and Elektra, you know? Pedro, you probably wanna ask a serious question.
Uh, more or less. So I, I tried out an example for creating a pull request. So if you could check it out and see if, if it works. I created a dot env dot example for people to start bootstrapping. And I want to see if I did it correctly.
Sorry, add and add example as files and that boosts the project, right? Uh. Notices, right. So I, I, what, what I would have done, the title could be, um, the title could be, um, like, uh, add dot env to project. Something like this. And then here in the description, you can just add the same thing that you just had.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, as, as markdown, you know, something like that. Uh, you know, so, so, so I, I always try to keep, keep those as short, you know, the titles as short as possible, right? But, uh, other than that, perfect. You added this from your fork, uh, from, uh, a feature branch, add env example to the Agile Ventures main branch. That's exactly what we were looking for. Definitely. Uh, right. And so I can just go ahead and merge. And once this is merged.
You probably want to check the file first, but.
Oh shit, I just assumed that you did it right.
Yeah, I checked, I checked the file, it's fine.
It is, good stuff, right.
Yeah, and, and probably, probably you want to do like the fixes, uh, hash thing. So that it's closest, uh.
Yeah, but there was no, no, uh.
Issue, okay, yeah.
There was no issue for that. Right, so we can take that. And you know, o- other thing that, you know what? If this is a, a bigger PR, I would, as a maintainer or anybody of you, could just, you just leave a comment. And before it's merged, there are three options here, whether you wanna comment, you approve, or if you wanna request changes. And if you request changes, then the merging is blocked. Nobody can, you know? Uh, so, but, but we can take that at another time when there is some more code to be reviewed, uh, in, in those PRs.
Is it safe to say, uh, Thomas, is it safe to say that this is pretty much what, what we've done with, uh, with the website one situation?
Yeah, yeah.
My case?
Right. Let's, let's, actually now that you bring it up, we can just take a, a quick look. Shima, he, he, he created a, a PR on the website one project. Shima, he 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 created a a PR on the Website One project recently, and by the way, Mikey, I'm gonna have. I need you to review it, um, later.
Okay.
Uh, but so, so, you know, there is a, there is a title. And then there is a link to the, um, to the issue, uh. In 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 the description, then there is, uh, some text in the description, there are a few, um, a few screenshots here. Just for for, um. Uh, for whoever is reviewing it, and then you have the list of commits, right? And so he and I have been working on this, and, uh. We we needed to add a few few things, and there are twenty-three different files changed. So, um, you can check those if you want. Uh, we changed a bit of code here.
Mostly you.
Well, you added a lot as well. Right. Yeah, so this is, by the way, I need to, don't approve that, Mikey, because there's some few.
Yeah, I was gonna comment on that immediately, see.
Yeah, 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 there's, yeah, yeah, I've been, you know, we've been struggling a little bit with this, uh, so so that's why there's. But but the thing is that, you see, when I sit in my in my IDE and code, it's hard to see, uh, what has been changed and what what. You know, what sort of mess I left behind me. So it's actually good, even for the developer, to go through this this view. Where you see exactly what has been changed and so on. At the end of the of the of the of the work, you can you can really review. What what you added and what you changed and so on, so that's, uh, uh, that's a good thing. And and here, Mike will probably, uh, go through this code, uh. And add things like comments directly here. You see, there is a plus sign that that pops up when you hover over a line. And so, uh, if you click on this, you can leave a comment, though, like, the fuck, uh, is this? For instance, right, and you can add emojis if you want, uh. And then you can choose to add a single comment or start a review and so on, so I can add a single comment. And 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 so on and so forth, right? So you can you can you can work with that this way. Alright, uh, fellas, one hour thirty-two minutes, let's keep this to to a manageable. Uh, time, I have a family that waits waits for me. Uh, we've made good progress today. We are open sourced, we are in in a working state, uh, of the app. I'm happy. Are you guys happy?
Super happy, very looking forward. And I guess then I, I mean, just just as a quick, quick question, but. I guess, uh, tomorrow, if I get to it, or latest maybe on on Tuesday, I would fork, uh, fork Claude etcetera. And then I guess I could just start messing around with the code with, uh, either tests or trying to clean something up. And I mean, worst case, uh, you don't accept my pull request, right?
In the worst case, exactly. What, so so, so what I would, what I would do if I were you to start with. Just grab any of these these issues that pops up in in in, um. You know, in this view, for instance, you just take the screen dialog JS, for instance, there are, uh, six. Uh, nine warnings, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Create a chore in Zenhub, because then you will have, uh, 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 something to work on. In reference, when you create that that, uh, uh, that, uh, that PR, create a branch. A clean screen dialog, for instance, right? And you you create that branch, you clean this up, you make sure that those those, uh, those warnings are gone, and you create a PR out of that. And and, uh, and that's it, you know.
Okay.
We can definitely start with that.
Awesome.
Do do you want to agree on a naming convention for the branches and?
Uh, at this, you know, we could, but at this stage, I I would just, just, it just, they just have to make sense, you know, what. Like the branch name should 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 reflect what you're doing and not be totally random, you know. Yeah.
Um, so Thomas, so right now, if I was to go, uh, if I was to fork SAV client.
Hmm.
I should, I shouldn't have any trouble, yeah?
You shouldn't.
Okay.
Yeah, my clock has been running all night, ever, ever, ever since I started this, so.
Okay.
So, so, Raisin asked the question, how do you create a chore in Zenhub? I have no clue. We need a label that is called chore. I don't know how to add labels on Zenhub, unfortunately.
Yeah, ac- actually, the way I have used Zenhub most clearly has been through GitHub issues, so. When when you create them, you can just create the labels on GitHub issues and they will show up here.
Okay.
Okay, so I I just create a GitHub issue in that case, and it should show up on new issues and Zenhub.
Right. Uh, okay.
So, like on on GitHub, it's easier to create the, um, the labels and all that.
Okay.
Awesome, okay.
So.
Yeah, I'm I'm inexperienced in both, so it's gonna be a carnage, but, yeah.
One one more question, please, Thomas.
Sure.
With regards to agile methodology and all that. How does, how how, the way we're go, are we gonna be working, um, with that in mind? Thinking of, you know, doing all the agile stuff, following all that stuff?
Could you repeat the question again?
So, you know, you've you've talked, and I I guess, yeah, you have mentioned, yeah, you you did talk a bit about, um. Uh, agile. Right? And and I'm saying that as now that we're pretty much getting close to the point where we start. In a sense, we are beginning now to work on the project, at least to get familiar with it. So are we going to be following that, those agile methodologies in our in our process of working on this?
Uh, I would, I would hope so, yeah. I mean, so so, uh. We, uh, I'm a great fan of of kinda, you know. Introducing them on a need-to-have basis, you know, because there's there's a, there's a danger in having a great meeting and just. Me or some of us laying out a big chunk of dos and don'ts, protocols. You have to address me with sir, for instance, and shit like that, you know, uh, and and, no, but but, you know. Uh, and, um, so let let's just, let's just, yes, sir, sorry, yes, sir, let's let's just, let's just.
Yes, yes, Mr. Luther.
Yes, I I had, uh, I had in the, uh, in the last cohort in Craft, at Craft Academy, I had a, I had a guy. He he called me guru, um, at all times, to a point where I actually thought it was kinda, almost kinda embarrassing, you know, but. Uh, but he 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 was fun. No, but, uh, because I'm not, you know, but but then again, um. As few rules as possible, the agile mindset is more important than the agile, uh, protocols, in my opinion. Especially in a, in a, in an open source project. It is, it is, um. Uh, important that we do practice them, though, because I think that will give you guys a competitive advantage. And and I I think it's important that we focus, uh, on on the protocols from extreme programming. More than than following Scrum or Kanban extremely strictly. I think that. Pair programming, uh, peer reviews, uh, automated tests and test-driven development with red-green refactoring. Uh, is is the the more more, most important practices that we, uh, we should, we should focus on. And, um, and everything else will come, um, you know.
Alright, cuz cuz I was just asking, because you know, the, I know it's really very little, just the during the pull requests and, um. Uh, with the, with the Website One, it it actually helped me make some improvements to my my own application. And that was very pretty, very minimal stuff, so I assume that, um, it would be beneficial if we. At least if if you're kind of keeping us on track.
Sure, sure.
So that we don't, yeah.
Yeah, no, and 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 the thing is, like, if you think about it, it this is a good example, uh, it's a good thing that you bring this up, because. You know, the Website One project is run by me as an Agile project, right? So and we have a set of of, uh. Of best practices and 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 set of ways of doing things. And I could have briefed you on all of them before you s- started to work on the on that particular issue. Then you would have forgotten about them, uh, and then you would, you know, it's much better to, you know, allow you to make mistakes. Or, you know, mistakes quote unquote, because they are not mistakes, you just don't, you 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 didn't know, right? And then I tell you on a need-to-know basis, and and you, we we make corrections, do you understand? And since you're a great guy, you don't take this as a, you know, personal criticism, do you understand? You just take, oh, yeah, sure, now I know, you know, I didn't know before.
Well, I didn't realize, I didn't realize you were Lex Luthor at the time.
Exactly, exactly, Kingpin, Kingpin.
Now I might not, I might not be able to take it so well now.
Uh, I think, I think that's, 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 that's the way to go, because, and if we can just all all agree that. The code we submit and the the feedback we get on the code we submit is not feedback on you as a person. Do you understand? If I, you know.
Oh my god, that would suck for me.
But but, you know, I make a lot of typos, for instance, because I'm stressed and I am careless or whatever, ignorant sometimes. But but, well, actually, I am an ignorant person, so, I, anyway, but but it's not me as a person, it's it's me writing code at that particular time, right? So so, uh, you know, the 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 feedback you get on your pu- pull requests are feedback on pull requests. It's not feedback on you as as a person. Uh, so so let's just stick to that. But, having said that, I would prefer. Personally, if you guys did practice pair programming, meaning that. You know, if if Clark Kent and wants to to program, you just ping me or or Mike or Clark or Carl, sorry, or.
Alona.
Uh, or, yeah, anybody else, to say, let let's set up a session, uh, you you pair to, you you program together. You know, switch code up once in a, uh, every every thirty minutes. And actually, if you can, you know, record it and then upload it to to, um. Uh, to to YouTube or whatever, or if you wanna stream it, that's even better, actually. Uh, because we want to pro- practice something we call open process. But I haven't spoken to you guys about this so much yet, because it it will come after a while. But open process means that not only do we open source the, uh, the code, which is great. But if you can do it in the open, if you can code in the open, then people can see your work and they can learn from it, you know. Because it's not only what you do, it's also how you do it.
Yeah, the thought process, but, yeah.
Clark, Anya, who's gonna speak?
I think he's gonna be back in a second, he just said, but basically, that's also what I thought, that, uh, right now, we just got access to the code. So I think, uh, we can already, everyone try to have a look at it and mess around it a little bit with it. Uh, and I think then there's kind of some natural process that should be happening, that we wanna get a little bit organized. Because we're all a bit new, uh, and and unsure. So I guess that's when we will have the first, like, proper questions of, uh. How's the, how's the process and how do you get together and, yeah. But I I I think for now, we just need to see the code a little bit and get comfortable with it and. And I, I, yeah, I think the first questions will come in the next few sessions on how to organize ourselves better.
Yep. Yep, yep. So I added a label called chore to to a label, so now I can choose a label on. This, um. On this, uh, add VMRC to project, uh.
Ah, yeah.
Yeah, so I will create a new issue. And that would be, um. That would be add add, uh, E two E testing framework. Uh, right, and that's not what I wanted to write, E two testing framework. And that will also be a chore, actually, uh, because it's, it doesn't, uh, uh. Doesn't add any new functionality to the code, and so I would say, uh, add Cypress. To to and and write, uh, basic, basic test. Uh, right, so that would be something that I can work on. Or you, I mean, anybody can pick it up, actually, perhaps, you know, you've seen Cypress being added to React, um. So whoever wants to pick it up, can pick it up, um, um.
Awesome.
Yeah, any other questions?
Okay. I think time to, time to go.
Time to go, time to fill up that wine, right?
Well, yeah.
Alright, see you Tuesday, if not before.
See you by Tuesday.
Stay cool, right?
Bye-bye.
Be kind to each other. Cheers.